It is now six P M. We're gonna call to order our regularly scheduled commission meeting Tuesday, May fourteenth at six P M. City Clerk, Lord of Call.
Is it done?
Mayor McCutcheon. Present. Commissioner Scal.
Present.
Commissioner Watts.
Present.
Commissioner Williams. Vice Mayor Barryton. Thank you. I will now have our invocation by Commissioner Jim Watts, followed by our pledge to the flag. Would you all please stand?
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for the time that you've given us tonight to help afford the citizens of our town. To consider items of support to our continued improvement and direction in this city, Lord, we ask you forgiveness. And our forgiveness just passes against one to the other. In the name of Jesus Christ, Lord, your Savior. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of the flag of the United States of America, and consider it holy for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Watts. Are there any additions and or deletions to tonight's agenda?
No, ma'am.
Being known, moving on to item E, our proclamations and presentations, awards and reports. Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. At first, proclamation, it reads, City of Fort Need proclamation. If Mr. Roger Clark will come forward, please, and stand. I'm gonna stand here, so the microphone can't hear me. Okay? All right. It says, whereas Mr. Roger Clark is a Fort Need native and attended Fort Need Middle Senior High School, where he excelled academically and athletically, he was named a two thousand five, two thousand six Sunshine State Scholar in letter three years in football, track and field, and weightlifting. And whereas after graduating high school, Mr. Clark attended Jacksonville University in Jacksonville, Florida, and participated in their three, two dual degree engineering program through which he also attended partner school, Florida International University, earning a B S in civil engineering with a concentration in transportation and a B S in engineering physics. He also served as the president of the National Society of Black Engineers and participated in numerous A S C E and Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers events during college. And whereas, after college, he was licensed as a professional engineer in the state of Florida and worked with the engineering firm H D R in South Florida for eight years, focusing on all things transportation related, including roadway, highway design, transit, signal retiming, and other areas. In two thousand twenty-one, he received the prestigious A S C E Florida Section Broward Branch Young Engineer of the Year Award. And whereas, Mr. Clark relocated back home to Polk County and currently resides in North Lakeland while working for engineering firm C D M Smith in Tampa, in their Tampa office, which is a dream come true due to his desire to give back to the community that gave so much to him. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Katrina McCutcheon, mayor of the City of Fort Need, Florida, and the City Commission, on behalf of the residents and businesses of Fort Need, do hereby proclaim May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as Roger Clark Day, signed this fourteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-four, by this commission. Would you all put your hands together?
Oh, Mrs. Clark?
Sure.
Absolutely. And young Mr. Clark?
Oh, actually, come up, sorry.
Let y'all smile like you mean. Good picture.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, Roger. Roger, good seeing you. Did it for a brief history. Roger came and shattered me at the D O T Design Department. How many years ago?
Sorry?
Over twenty. But, and he walked out that day. And he showed up, unlike most kids out of high school, they go shadow just to get our day of classes. He came in, of course, I didn't let him play around too much. We gave him something to actually do. And he left that day, wouldn't be an engineer. And he worked hard. Thank you.
All right. All right. We are going to mail, we are going to mail to the respective organizations these proclamations, the following proclamations, because they are not present today. Whereas mental health care can help people find joy and purpose, and ensuring they have access to care they need is about dignity. There is a proving connection between good mental health and overall personal health. And whereas mental health illness affects almost every family in America, and people with mental illnesses make important contributions to our families and our communities. And whereas only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seek treatment due to stigma and fear discrimination, although they would greatly benefit from mental health services. And whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, businesses, and schools, as well as our greater public awareness about mental illnesses can change negative attitudes and behaviors toward people with mental illnesses. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Katrina McCutcheon, mayor of the City of Fort Need, and the City Commission, on behalf of the residents and businesses of Fort Need, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand twenty-four, as Mental Health Awareness Month. That we acknowledge that. City of Fort Need proclamation. Whereas amyotrophic lateral sclerosis, A L S, also known as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a devastating neurodegenerative disease that affects nerve cells in the brain and spinal cord, leading to progressive muscle weakness, paralysis, and ultimately loss of life. Whereas A L S Awareness Month provides an opportunity to raise awareness, promote understanding, and advocate for research, treatment, and support services for individuals living with A L S, their families and caregivers. And whereas, A L S Awareness Month honors the courage, resilience, and determination of individuals living with A L S who face daily challenges with grace, dignity, and unwavering strength, and who inspire us all with their bravery and optimism in the face of adversity. And whereas, A L S Awareness Month recognizes the tireless efforts of healthcare professionals, researchers, advocates, and organizations dedicated to advancing A L S research, improving care and support services, and advocating for policies that enhance the quality of life and well-being of individuals affected by A L S. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Katrina McCutcheon, the mayor of the City of Fort Need, Florida, and the City Commission, on behalf of the residents and businesses of Fort Need, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand twenty-four, as A L S Awareness Month. City of Fort Need proclamation. Whereas, the National League of Cities was founded in nineteen twenty-four in Lawrence, Kansas as the American Municipal Association by state municipal leagues seeking more coordination and national representations, representation as cities, towns, and villages expanded rapidly. And whereas, the nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing the interests of more than nineteen thousand cities, towns, and villages across the country. And whereas, the National League of Cities works in partnership with forty-nine state municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies that impact local programs and operations. And whereas, as the voice of cities, towns, and villages in Washington, D.C., the National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislative solutions that support municipalities and has worked closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation. And whereas, Fort Need is a proud member of the National League of Cities and has benefited from the organization's research, technical expertise, federal advocacy, and opportunities to learn from other local governments. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Katrina McCutcheon, mayor of the City of Fort Need, Florida, and the City Commission, on behalf of the residents and businesses of Fort Need, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand twenty-four, as National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month. Thank you. We'll now move along to item F, the public forum. Each person addressing the commission shall sign in with the city clerk no later than six oh five P M. Persons shall step up to the microphone, shall give his or her name and address in an audible tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the commission, shall limit their address to the three minutes. All remarks shall be addressed to the commission as a body and not to any member thereof. No person other than the members of the commission having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through the members of the commission. Do we have anyone wish to speak at this time at our public forum? Please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Curtis Bankston.
All right. Thank you. Come forward, Mr. Bankston.
Good evening. And moving around town, I'm looking at a lot of worthy work being done to the ground. And I'm wondering if that work is gonna end at Nice Street North and not go any further. Now, for about forty-five years, I've been fighting as a resident of Fort Need to get some attention out there. Hasn't happened. Okay? But there's money now coming in. It has been coming in for a while now, you know? And I really could have called Tallahassee and found out why I can't use some of that money in that section. I mean, that's for me. You know? But I haven't called Tallahassee. My plan is not to do that because I want the city to work it out while my patients are getting short, you know? So I'm concerned about, if I'm not mistaken, these are storm sewers, right?
Yes.
Okay. We don't have any of them. We have sewer out there. Been fighting this for years. And Mr. Wright has been trying to help me out to get something done with that in too, but we haven't been successful. You know, so I'm concerned about the streets, you know, the roads out there, they're dusty. And I'm also concerned about emission from that new plant out there. I don't know what the name of it is. Somebody needs to check and make sure that the emissions are properly coming from that plant out there, you know? So, well, I've got a tree that's been leaning over since the hurricane. Nobody comes out there to look, look around. At the city, all right, but nobody comes out there to look around and say, well, this is where we got to start next. I've got a tree that needs to come down now. Been needing to come down. The hurricane blew it over. And I had to report it to somebody. I don't even remember who, you know? And I need to get that tree removed, you know? And our mailboxes, the city, I'm not blaming the city for anything here. D O T dug the ditches deeper. We used to drive down the ditches to go into our yard. But D O T came and dug them deeper so we couldn't do that. And our mailbox is on the highway there, you know? And I don't know why they did that. I know why they did it too, to avoid us coming down the ditch. They would make us a crossover. They could have made us a crosswalk with a pipe there and so, so we can cross over and get to our mailbox. So now we have to go to our automobiles to get our mail. We have to drive out there to the box. And the box is right in front of our living quarters, you know? But anyway, I don't think that's good. So all I'm saying is this, use some of this money that's coming, these grants, to work out there. That's all I'm really saying, you know? Maybe you're gonna relocate the mailboxes. I don't know. But still, if you're gonna relocate the mailboxes, you know, we're still gonna have a problem. Because sometime, see, water stays in those ditches when it rains. And that might be because we don't have any storm sewers and things that nature. Anyway, I just wanted to mention those things. And I don't want to go directly to Tallahassee. Does she walk with or get that? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
We do need to look at that little red cemetery out there at Barn. And I know we've looked.
Mike the phone.
We've looked a number of times at securing the right of way easily, so we can get some roads paved in there. But what is planted years ago, there's nobody reading. It was never filed. So we got a right of issue, but they've been contacted. Everybody's agreed to go with what we do, if I'm not right. Curtis, is that correct? Didn't they agree with all the people out there who agreed?
Yeah, Mike took a paper there and said, hey, get everybody to sign that. And I did that.
Right, right.
It should be all right somewhere here.
But we do need to look forward into it.
This is now week B. Good evening, commissioners. The residents of Fort Need keep finding out about personnel and staff changes through various ledger articles instead of commission meeting discussions. Right after you approved transferring three hundred thousand dollars of emergency funds from our reserve to pay bills, the city created a brand-new position, clerical administrative assistant, who not only was paid for their time, but was allowed to work twenty-hour days and receive an additional forty-two point seven five hours of overtime on their first pay period and thirty-five and a half hours of overtime on their second pay period. It's a lot of money of overtime. In Monday's ledger, we read that there's been a job title change to now Chief of Staff and Public Information Officer. This promotion came with an enormous ninety thousand dollar salary. This position was not advertised to the public, nor was any interviews conducted. Now, at any time, Fort Need residents are being told the city doesn't have the money to pay for the fire department operating budget and will most likely have to chip in an extra hundred bucks for the next fire assessment. The power cost adjustment is slowly creeping back up on our electric bill. And we also learned that the assistant city manager has been fired for mishandling ARPA funds. During the last public forum, my father asked, for the good of the community, to share what the three point one million in ARPA was actually spent on. A week or so later, we received an email from the city that in order to find what the three point one million was spent on, it would require the city to pay an accounting specialist eight hours of work. And it was my father's responsibility to pay for this accounting specialist. So the city expects a private resident to do the city's job and pay two hundred and four dollars and thirty-two cents out of his personal pocket to find out how ARPA was spent. ARPA transactions are supposed to be precisely recorded according to state compliance reporting guidelines as well as the guidelines issued by the U.S. Department of Treasury. So explain to me how we need emergency funds and fire an assistant manager without knowing one hundred percent how or if the three point one million was spent. Now tonight, later in your agenda, you're being asked to allow our last asset-making revenue currently safeguarded in an interest-bearing money market to be repealed and transferred into the general fund. The original intent of the ordinance was so that the mobile home profits would not be used to balance the budget. Let's rein in spending elsewhere. Please consider not transferring these funds into the general fund. Thank you.
Mr. Roger Wright?
Roger Wright, forty-four hundred, Highway ninety-eighty. Concerning I three and J two of the agenda, the mobile home park funds, the mobile home park enterprise fund was an operating account for the park. It makes sense to transfer that money to the general fund or add it to the trust fund. Concerning the trust fund, when the sale of the mobile home park started being talked about, commissioners discussed the sale of the mobile home park to adequate buyers. It was agreed to sell only if the principal proceeds would go into a restricted account, interest-producing. The intent was keep making money on the asset that we have been operating since the nineteen fifties. The interest made would go into the general funds. A few easily found records that I did come up with in ninety-seven. A few easily found records that I did come up with, in ninety-seven, the mobile home park netted in two hundred and six thousand dollars. Ninety-eight, two hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. Ninety-nine, two hundred and two thousand dollars. The city would always rely on this income to operate and help keep electrical rates as low as possible. Right now, the city is pulling in around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars annual from this sale, which is interest, and it's not disturbing the principal sale proceeds. There have been countless hours to protect this valuable asset from commissioners, past commissioners, and also employees, and it just makes good sense to retain this money as an asset for it to keep making money. If things are kept in its present state, that's what will happen. Please think deeply on this subject because actually, the money from the mobile home park sale should be the citizens' money. Thank you.
Ms. Dee Gavin.
Well, I have something positive to present tonight. I present that we now have a Fort Meade Fire Department auxiliary. It is a five oh three one C, and you'll see things shortly coming from us to raise funds. And there was a conversation, I know he's not here tonight, with Chief Sahara about the fire truck, of keeping the old fire truck out the barn in the city and not letting it be sold and keeping it here. We discussed also of using it as a fundraising for the auxiliary. So that will be something I wanted to offer to tonight, to let you all know that there is an auxiliary. And our mission statement for the auxiliary, I'm going to read it, is, it's short, is to support the firefighters of the Fort Meade Fire Department in their pursuit to save the lives and property of the citizens they serve, which are Fort Meade. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Weinco.
I'm Bill Weinco, three fourteen North East Sixth Street. I wanted to clarify my comments, one thing, and it's probably me, but I can't hear again tonight. The last meeting, let me give you a little history, I went into Dustin's office right after he took office and asked him, told him I was having trouble hearing, and other people were too. And he called me at five thirty that afternoon and said, I think we've got this fixed. And the last meeting I came to, I could hear every word in here. So I, maybe it's just me, but I, I can hear y'all pretty good, but I cannot hear the persons up here.
You can't hear that, you can't hear that microphone.
Yeah, and it may just be my problem, but I'm reluctant to make any comments if I can't hear what's going on. And it's probably me, but it's obvious. Would you mind if I sat right there? Never mind, I just.
Is there a problem with that?
I just, I can't hear, and I apologize for that.
Is there objection to him sitting up here?
Can you hear?
I can, but I don't, he has a hearing aid and I don't.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, you switch seats.
I'll be happy to. I can't go back there, then I can't hear.
Let me try.
At this time, we'll close the public forum. Moving on to item G, approval of minutes.
Move through the minutes of the April nineteenth, ninth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, as written.
Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor of approval of the minutes on our April ninth regular commission meeting, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. What is it, three one? Yes, I said aye. Oh, okay, motion carries, four zero. Thank you. Alright, our consent agenda. Have we all had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, are there any items that need further discussion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written and laid out.
Okay, we have a motion to approve our consent agenda as written. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question about number three here.
Item three. What's your question?
Transferring, transferring the fund, assets to the general fund. Where are those?
We are on our consent agenda.
H.
H.
H. I'm sorry, I'm drawing one.
Okay.
I'm, okay.
Alright, any questions regarding anything in the consent agenda? Okay, there's been a proper motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries, four zero, approval of our consent agenda. Item aye. Resolution number one, resolution two four three seven. Would you like to read the title, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Resolution twenty, twenty-four dash thirty-seven, a resolution of the City of Fort Meade, Florida creating an amnesty program for city code enforcement liens and fines, providing that interim city manager or his designee is authorized to execute and record a satisfaction of liens upon full payment of code enforcement fines or penalties, providing that the interim city manager or his designees are considered any application of reduction or forgiveness or up code for fines or liens when orders imposing fines or liens have been recorded of public records before, have provided for effective date.
Thank you, Attorney Powell. Alright, any further discussion on the item one under aye, resolution twenty-four thirty-seven?
I thought we had something in place regarding this, didn't we, going on this a while back? If you pay, we're talking about, if you pay a lien and you. Clean it up for reduction. Yeah, right. That was our original, I think, we're thinking about. We do have a lien reduction process in place. This is new.
Is there a presentation or further discussion, city manager? Could you clarify what this amnesty program? For those who are not able to make the town hall meeting.
Sure, sure. In my short time here, I've noticed that, let me say, I'm not against code enforcement, our liens and fines, they serve a purpose. However, they've grown in our city to a level that doesn't service. We found out yesterday that there's an estimated one hundred homes with two hundred and fifty thousand in liens or more. That's twenty-five million dollars in liens on a hundred properties. We get calls from investors, we get calls from property owners saying we want to sell our home, we want to sell our property. We've got these liens, and sometimes we hear from people that wanted to come into the area that couldn't, couldn't enter the market because the seller was like, I've got liens and I'm not, you know, we can't get off and under them. So that was the impetus for this program, to help move Fort Meade forward, to bring in new ideas, new money, revitalize the commercial corridor, houses that are in disrepair. So that's the impetus of the program. The idea is that we would handle it administratively, because you all are paid a hundred dollars a month. So to burden you with administrative hassle seems unfair, and it also seems inefficient. To put a one-year timeline on it creates urgency, and says, hey, we want to move now. If you wanted to sell your house, you wanted to sell your property, you wanted to come into the market, this is the time to do it. And it also is an opportunity to, for the residents and the property owners to, and the city to be in a right standing with each other. So, that's the program, very highly.
What does it cover?
Sorry.
The hard costs and the soft costs?
It does, it can, well, it does cover the soft costs, and it can cover the hard costs, if it's, if it makes sense to cover the hard costs. I mean, if it's some, if it's somebody who's on a fixed income and has a roof problem and couldn't get their roof fixed, and we impose some hard costs, I think it could make sense in that, those instances to waive it. So there would be instances, I think, that would make sense to waive hard costs. Sometimes the hard costs exceed the property value. So, in those instances, it would make sense to waive it because there's no incentive for anyone to sell it or buy it if the hard costs are more than the property value.
They're giving away city money.
Well, it's not real money, I mean, because we're not collecting it. We have twenty-five million dollars in liens, and the last two years, we've collected thirty-five thousand of it. So it's not like it's, we've done a good job collecting, and it doesn't appear that it's been, it's no longer serving the residents as it should. That's my thoughts.
What about the attorney fees, you have that?
Well, that's part of the hard costs.
That's what I know.
And so it doesn't make sense in where the attorney fees incurred judiciously. I mean, were they, whose fault was it? Was it the city's fault that they incurred these hard costs, or was it the residents' fault? I mean, those are things that have to be waived.
Problem will be resolved in its first line, then it won't be a problem.
To microphone.
Not always, I mean, we have challenges sometimes getting permits approved. We've had challenges getting clear title. So, it's not always the residents' fault, the city is not blameless in their behavior and the enforcement of liens. And I think as an active.
Hard costs.
It's the same, yeah, sometimes we've incurred hard costs that maybe shouldn't have been incurred.
That's what we send out, good money. The hard cost money we spend for the hours of work time and effort to go cut laws, yards, whatever.
Right, but what happens when the hard costs exceed the value of the underlying property?
Well, every case is different, you know, it's not like a blanket situation, every case is different.
Well, yeah, we wouldn't, we would not just summar, summarily just waive all hard costs.
Saying, but you don't understand what we're saying too, I mean, I don't like, I don't like the whole thing. I don't like it because I don't mind coming up here and listening to people, and I'll help anybody I can.
And this is, I think, what we're trying to do. Well, here, they've clearly assessed the amount of liens that have been placed on just a hundred families. And I think a way for the city to show our way or our efforts in assisting our residents who live here and who pay taxes here, helping them because the majority of our town is in the CRA. And this is one of the ways that the CRA can help as a whole, or we as a city, as a commission can help reduce and eliminate blight, is to extend a hand up. I don't mind, you know, imposing liens, hard or soft liens on individuals, I don't have a problem with that, I never did. But apparently, since I've been on this commission, anyone who comes up here and asks for forgiveness of two hundred and fifty thousand, well, let me retract, almost eight hundred thousand dollars in liens to equal hard and soft costs, this commission has no problem with forgiving. So, this is a way, again, to extend an olive branch to those we've imposed hard and soft costs. No, it isn't a blanket forgiveness. These individuals will still have to come up and say, look, I want to apply for this program. If they don't show up here asking, guess what, then we don't know that they want to work with us. So therefore, perhaps, maybe the liens will stay on. But I do think that this will show the citizens our efforts to help them get rid of these liens so that they can improve their properties, so that they can acquire permits that are necessary to clean up their yards or get roofs repaired, or do whatever it is that they need to get done. Because there has been a consistent, I don't want to poke at anyone in, you know, within city hall or anything like that, but there's just been a miscommunication at times in regards to having people get permits, this, that, and the third. And so this is a way, I think, my perspective, is that it aids our citizens. It kind of shows that we have faith in them, and we want to help them improve the aesthetics in our neighborhoods. I don't know about you, but I've had some neighbors and some people in the district that I represent have had some neighbors with a lot of issues. And if the city can come along and say, hey, we're willing to help you if you are willing to help yourself by implementing this plan, I think it will go a long way, and we will start to see a turnaround in a lot of our neighborhoods.
How many people have applied to this since this came, came up?
Well, zero, we.
I'm talking about.
The original.
The original, yes. Nobody's applied to.
The original, the original.
We had a lien reduction. We had a lien reduction. We've got a lien reduction program right now. All we've got to do is apply for it.
Oh, so you're saying you would prefer that they continue to come to the podium and ask for forgiveness of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we say, yes, you're forgiven?
Well, I really have it case by case, and I don't want one person having to say so, that's why they have a city commission. I don't mind coming up here and helping anybody, but I'd like to know what we're doing. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and I think they'll have to apply, correct, for the amnesty program if it is approved.
They have to apply, of course, we would have reporting measures in place to let you know who's applied, what the forgiveness has been, you know. I think we've been extremely transparent about what we're doing. We update the commission regularly about things that are happening in the administration. So this would be something that we would add to that reporting list. And also, something really important to remember about this is, the property owner must bring the subject into compliance. They can't, there's no forgiveness unless the property is back to its proper state and it's generating its proper tax-based revenue. That's the idea, we want them back on the tax roll, we want them revitalized. And so, it's a choice between hard costs that we may never recover or getting something back on the tax roll and getting some buzz here in town.
Alright. I will comment. And try to be very intentional with my words as I'm aware of the tension. Let me state this, there have been many residents here, the residents that elect us to serve in these seats, who have shared their concerns and their struggles with code enforcement. This happened as I got back home, as I moved back home, and has continued for the past nearly three years. I think it's very important that we pay attention to how this vote takes place and what it says about the direction we desire for our city to move. If in ten years, this city is still stuck in the same situation that it is, because it's absolutely abortive to me, that we have twenty-five million dollars in liens, we have liens that far exceed the value of properties, and we expect people who are on fixed income to come up with in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It is personally insane to me. Now, I want to state that although legally I can vote on this, I have made a personal decision to abstain from voting on this matter. Not because I cannot vote, but I wanted to be clear that I am equally concerned about the many residents who have come to me in person, on social media, about concerns regarding code enforcement. My personal thought regarding this program is it can serve our community in an incredible way to get properties back on the tax roll that will then impact our finances in a positive way. It is absolutely a no-brainer to push this forward. And any objection to it, because it's here, and it clearly states that property owners have a year to bring the properties into compliance, or these are the consequences. So this is not a free run on everybody. So this is not a, a free run on everybody. We forgive fines and, and you have no responsibilities because it's all outlined here. To me personally, Madam Mayor, this is a no-brainer on how we move the city forward. But I want to state, uh, I will be personally abstaining from voting on this matter.
Madam Mayor?
Sir, yes.
With all due respect, Commissioner Williams, you're not entitled to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Unless you have a clear conflict of interest, which I advise you do not. Under Florida law, you cannot make your personal decision to abstain from any vote that you're legally entitled to make.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Item one under.
So you looked into it and there is no-
Mike.
The mic. What's wrong with him?
Commissioner, what's your question?
Why is there not a conflict?
Uh, because the way Florida law considers conflicts, avoiding conflicts, there's a balancing test. I'll just make it, um, brief because there's a number of ethical statutory requirements that go into consideration. But the short answer is unless there is a vote that is being taken by an elected official that is directly resulting in a specific benefit to that particular, um, voting elected official, there is no conflict. And this particular case was being proposed, um, it is global in nature. It's not specific. So, it would be the same, just to use a very simple answer, if you all voted on a reduction in the millage rates for your property. So, you wouldn't be able to vote on that because your millage rate could go down and your taxes would necessarily go down. So unless there's a finding that the vote is specific, there is no voting conflict. I advised, um, Commissioner Williams of that earlier, and I'm putting that on the record. So, in my opinion, he's obligated to vote, just like everyone else that's in attendance today.
I disagree with that opinion, but I respect your opinion.
That's all I can ask.
You still think it's, I just think it's right. Right now, you've got a hundred, you've got a hundred cases.
Ken speaking to Mike.
You've got a hundred cases, right now, instance.
No, but we asked the code enforcement, uh, how many properties have large lien amounts on them? And they said there's approximately a hundred properties with bad, with two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars or more. So, so that's just big properties. There's probably lots smaller ones, uh, out there.
They've always had the opportunity to come in and ask for help, from the beginning. For some reason, they don't ask for help?
That is incorrect. That is incorrect.
Well, they've always had opportunity to come in and they ask, ask, present their case. We like to say we've got a lien reduction policy in place. We talk about that. But they haven't for years. They have put back and not come in, and not addressed the problem. And so now, we will put it on for another year, and nothing pops into that.
Well, I think this is different. This is, we're inviting you to come to the table. We're inviting you to get your property and, and, and the proper, uh, and, and proper form. And then we will, we'll forgive the liens, which, what, what has been going on for years, what you just mentioned, has now generated a hundred properties with twenty-five million in liens and the downtown looks the way it does. Let's try something different. That's all. And I, I, I mean, I respect tradition, but the tr- this tradition, it's not serving downtown. It's not serving businesses. It's not serving the residents. So let's pivot. It's not a big pivot. It's just a pivot. And let's invite residents to the table. Let's invite them to get in right standing with, we with them and they with us.
Any, any further?
In the public speak?
Any further, um, comment on this, Commissioner Williams there?
No.
No. Okay. All right. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't really grasp what the fear is, um, about implementing, um, this plan. Because again, we will restate it again. No one is getting a blank check to forgive their liens. There are criteria that residents will still have to agree with to do. The most primary one is to bring their property into compliance. And on a case-by-case basis, it will be decided how much of their liens will be forgiven. We're not, that's not my interpretation of what is written here. So, um, you know, if there, there are no further questions, can, can we entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The audience has asked for a question. Is there any going to recognize a down option?
Oh, who, who wants, who has a question?
I do.
Of course. Come, come on up.
It appears that-
Name, name and address for the record.
In Spade, six thirteen Northeast Third Street. It, it appears that we've gotten into a position that's just untenable for a lot of residents. And, and, and there's no way out. And so, it seems like we need to stop it going forward, not allow fines to get to that point. And, and I made the comment to somebody, there's churches, there's civic groups, there's school kids that need volunteer work, uh, things like that. We all have a committee or somebody that maybe people could come to and say, "I need help."
Right.
And, and I, I agree with, for the most part. But I, I think we, we've got to stop it going forward. I know a piece of property that has been looking like, you know what, for a year. And my problem is that is it going to go on for another year? Or are we going to get serious about making that person clean all that junk up in their backyard? You know, neighbors get tired of seeing all that stuff. But at the same time, this money's never coming to us. I don't see it.
Right.
I mean, until, until, if, if we've got a lien on the house, then we get property at some point in time. But, uh, nobody's going to pay you any more than you're worth.
Thank you. And I think it's, it's, um, one of the things that I'm aware of, um, I, I briefly work for an agency within the county, uh, especially for our elderly community. There are programs out there that will assist our elderly, especially if their properties are in disarray, they're rundown. There are some programs out there that will assist our elderly community with rehabbing their homes and getting their properties livable again. It's just that unfortunately, that information is not being told to our residents when we slap a fine on. And that's the problem I have. I don't have a problem with you fining anybody, but I also think that if we're going to, you know, fine you or what have you, let's, let's create a solution. I think we have an obligation to provide solutions in cases where we have the information and are able to do so. And I think there are solutions out there. People are just not aware that they exist. I, I, I firsthand know that. They are not aware. I have a neighbor right now, her roof has been badly damaged from several storms ago. She did not know that there was a program out there to assist her to get her roof repaired, until I went across the street and I saw her daughter visiting her, who lives, um, out of county, about three hours away. She was not aware of that. So that's why her roof is the way it is. And so, it's just the little things like that that make a big difference. And I think if programs such as this, that not only will we say, "Hey, we have this available, but let's help you tap into this resource that's free for you, by the way." We're, we're paying for it. You're paying for it if you're a taxpayer. The federal government has given Polk County all these funds, so let's tap into that. Similarly to our LIHE program, it's the same thing. So, I think we have to give people solutions as well. Point out problems, but also give them a solution. And I think this is a great solution. All right?
Uh, to be clear, I'm more inclined to possibly be, uh, to consider something over fines, but I don't, I, I think we owe it to the city, the taxpayers, to get our money back on the hard costs.
When have we ever gotten the money back? I'm curious. Can you point that out? Since I've been here, this is my fifth year. When, when have we ever gotten the money back? And I wish you had that same energy.
Over the past, last two years, we've collected about thirty-five thousand dollars in fines.
Two years.
And, and that's, that, I don't know what that is, as hard costs and soft costs, but that's thirty-five thousand that we received total from our, from our twenty-five million dollar plus pool of, of liens.
Two years. That's it. I don't think that's making a big dent in just by anything we're doing here. Thirty-five thousand dollars over two years. Okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry. Is it possible that, um, if you had more time, can we gather more information regarding the state of, of liens here in the city for me? For example, I know you've stated that, um, there's twenty-five million dollars worth of liens out there from what you've been able to find thus far. With more time or investiga- investigation, can you, can you find more data? Or is that it just doesn't exist, or it's in various locations?
Oh, it exists, but it exists in filing cabinets. And, you know, you might have liens from thirty years ago that are still accruing in, in the filing cabinets. And so, again, the way that we find out about this is someone says, "Hey, I'm interested in the property. We're doing a title search. Are there any liens?" And, um-
How, how is that efficient in any?
Well, I, it, it, it isn't efficient. Um, there, we need to inventory what we're owed. We need to inventory who has liens. We need to inventory how, how long, how, how much they've accrued to and what, you know, the aging on it. Um, but it's never been done. And, um, again, so where we are is because, wh- when we know something is being, has a lien on it, it's because somebody asked us. It wasn't because we're tracking it. And, but we can't find it. It would just, I don't know the man-hours that it would take to go through these filing cabinets and paper documents from, from years and decades ago. It would be probably very labor-intensive to do. It'd be a big project.
At some point, you got to make sure that the owner is still responsible for the condition.
Yes.
They, they keep growing and growing and growing. The owner is not making any attempt, or contacted us or code enforcement about making arrangements.
Yeah, I, I agree. You're right. They haven't. Until they come up here and they ask for forgiveness, and we forgive. That's the only time they come. I think the last time I was here and we forgave one, our owner had gotten, um, assessed fines over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, right down the road here. And the only reason she came is because she wanted us to forgive it. And we did. Um, another owner down the road here on Highway seventeen, his property had been dilapidated for years. I think for twenty-plus years. He never came up here until he said he had someone interested in buying. We forgave it, almost eight-hundred thousand dollars. So you had no interest in recouping that money then. We, we, we forgave it all, hard and soft. And I warned the commission that doing so would come back to bite us. I warned them. I did not agree with that. I felt like being that we had something written, in order to recoup some of our funding, we should adhere to it. We completely looked past it, and we said, well, some of us said on the commission then, it's a case-by-case basis, and therefore, because it was our friend, we're going to go ahead and forgive it.
I thought we paid the hard costs for that. You told them about Sherman Davis's property.
We didn't get our money back, upwards of eight-hundred thousand dollars.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to comment that is correct. I have the meeting, the, the, uh, the notes from the meeting, from that specific, uh, meeting. Um, and I believe what was, it was reduced to less than two percent of the cost.
Correct. It, it was very minuscule. And so now, that we're introducing a program that, again, is not giving folks that. They're not receiving that grace. They're just receiving an opportunity over the next year, should this pass, to bring their properties into compliance, get their property back on the tax roll. Should those who own the property desire to sell their property, perhaps now they can sell their property. Also, if they want to keep their property, um, and start, you know, getting back on the tax roll, then they can. That is what this is doing. Again, I believe, in my opinion, it is a hand up, not a hand out. And again, they will assess on a case-by-case basis what portion of these liens will be forgiven. Will it be hard and soft, or will it be a combination of the both, but maybe not all? And I, and I don't, and I, I don't have a problem with the, the amnesty program. So now-
Sorry, one more comment. And I know this, this needs the time.
No problem.
I personally feel, Madam Mayor, there needs to be somewhat of an overhaul of our code enforcement program, um, or how we approach code enforcement. And I don't know how that exists, um, in our day-to-day and the conversations that are taking place. But this is very alarming, um, for the residents, for the many who have spoken to me directly. And as we discuss it here in the meeting, and I, I don't know what that looks like. You mentioned that there is data in, in cabinets. And are we doing anything to get that data inside of a more accessible form in computers? I, I-
We do have plans for that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we just rebuilt the financial reporting infrastructure. That's taken a lot of time, and we're going to go into that in a few, in a few agenda items. I, I, our, our next objective is to digitize all documents that we can. Madam Clerk here, I, I, I bring stuff to her all the time. Now, hey, if we don't need this, let's get it, get it scrapped or digitized. And I think I gave her some things from the nineties today. So we, we, so, yeah, so it, we are trying to get that itemized, um, in the proper systems of record and tracking. Um, it's just a matter of we, we, we're not there yet.
And I understand, I know this has only been four or five months in. There are many problems that you have inherited from previous administrations. I'm just asking about, um, how, how we move forward, understanding that what has been created and, and the problems that exist are not, you know, specifically on this administration.
Correct.
No further discussion? I'm ready to entertain a motion.
You want to say something while you're doing it?
Come on up, Mr. Banks. State your name and address for the record.
Kurt Banks, thirteen, seven, North Chuffin Avenue.
You got to do it in the microphone, Mr. Banks.
These things ain't no good.
It's on.
It's on.
Hello? Y'all heard me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what I'm thinking, this one thing on the stage, what y'all thinking, I mean, y'all lawmakers, you know, say they got a year or something, trying to come in some kind of compliance. And you're still going to come up there and ask for forgiveness. First thing you got to do is stop the daily fines. You got to stop the daily fines. If you're going to help them, they're coming after you. The daily fines are going to kill them. So what you going to be moving is something to find that you're still giving. Now, you ain't going to touch that point of white man. You won't touch it at all. Look, they're cutting the daily fines off, and they, they're probably too high anyway, the daily fines. So put your whole stuff in that, but say you're not going to collect that money. You're not going to collect that. Because they're still going to be fined while you're trying to collect it.
And, 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 and to put that into perspective, just so the information is in the room, there are residents that have come and, and shared with me. One of them is receiving a six-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day in code enforcement. Six-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day.
That's another topic for another day. How to get to that amount, I don't know. But for, for now, I, I'll entertain a motion. Will there be one? If there will not be a motion- If there will not be a motion, Attorney Powell, this dies, correct?
Correct.
All right, since there is no motion on Resolution twenty-four dash three-seven, Astonishing Code Enforcement Lien Amnesty Program, it dies. Forever. It, it, it won't die forever. Perhaps we can bring it back for another date, another time, revisit it. But for now, it dies. All right. Moving on to item two. Yes.
About that idea before we move on. If it's difficult to bring it back another time, it might be better if we, uh, knew something about it prior to the meeting, other than the, the, uh, town hall meeting. And then sit, it's a big discussion, and we're coming in, finding out what's going on back. That's difficult for me, too.
Then, then we would have to schedule another meeting, um, because I don't know how else we all would find out about it. Uh, we would have to schedule a meeting. We would have to publicize that. We, we get our packets, uh, or you could, like you've been doing, come in and talk to the city manager about what's upcoming. That's the only other way that I know of to find out prior. I mean, I can't talk to you about it.
And, and Madam Mayor, like, you know, I, I completely understand what you're saying, Commissioner Watts. Another concern of mine is that we didn't, we, I was not a part of the commission, but the commission did endow the previous city manager to make these types of decisions, and there was no quarrel or no problem with it. He was endowed with that power and, uh, whenever residents had an issue, they went to the city manager to work the issue out. I, I am perplexed as to why there is opposition doing that with this administration, but that, that's...
He's not here now, he isn't.
I'm sorry?
I said, he's the city manager here now.
He's not, but those who are making decisions, those, those decisions are still here. And so I, that's why I was addressing it.
So I, I don't know, uh, how, how else we would be informed about, um, items that are being brought up to the commission. I guess if you had scheduled a meeting with, uh, the city manager, you could find out that information and feel free to discuss those with him one-on-one. You know, or when you get your packet, if you have questions, you can call. But neither here nor there, since we didn't get a motion, item one does die. Um, we're gonna move along. Item two, Resolution two-four dash four-zero, Resolution to close the Grants Fund and transfer the negative fund balance to the appropriate enterprise funds.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Meade, Florida, directing the closure of the Grants Fund, Fund One Ten, directing staff to conduct a detailed analysis of the grant funds transactions and identify necessary transfers to appropriate enterprise funds, providing for the development of budget amendment ordinances and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir. All right. Assistant City Manager Bert, would you please clarify?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, in our review of the financial structure of the city, uh, reviewing our, a meeting with our CPA, meeting with our, with our CFO, uh, services, um, they are recommending that we close the Grants Fund. They are, they, they can't explain why it was established, but they, they have made it very clear to us that this is not a best practice. This actually may go against Gatsby. And, um, so just as a technical advisory, uh, they're recommending that we close this fund. The challenge in that is that the fund has a negative fund balance. Uh, the, the fund has a negative fund balance of, uh, one-point-seven million dollars. Uh, we're gonna have to transfer that fund balance to the enterprise funds, um, from which they should be allocated to. Let's, I, I can answer any other technical questions, but that's really the, the impetus and the reason, uh, that we meet this.
Yes, question, Madam Mayor. It, so why do, why does the fund have a negative balance of one-million-seven-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-three dollars?
Because that was the accounting practice at the time, uh, to use the, the Grants Fund to pay for, uh, items that were going to be later reimbursed or were expected to be later reimbursed. So the idea is we'll, we'll pay it out of the Grants Fund and it was, uh, understood by staff that the Grants Fund would always maintain a negative fund balance, which, um, is, um, not the proper way to handle a fund. You can't operate a fund in a negative fund balance. The money's gotta come from somewhere, right? It just doesn't appear. So while this, this fund has a negative fund balance of one-point-seven million dollars, it's actually weighing down the other funds, but it's not properly being reported at how much we're weighing those funds down. So that's why. I mean, it was just the practice.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Any questions, Commissioner Stell?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Watts, any questions regarding? None? Okay. All right. No questions, huh? All right. So, in essence, as my grandmother would say, the city was writing checks that we could not cash.
Well, this, this fund was writing checks that it could not cash, yes, uh, uh, in hopes that the other funds would cover it.
In hopes. Even though we applied for a grant, and I'm one-hundred percent we're gonna get it, but it never materialized, therefore, as a result.
Well, this fund has part, some of that, and it also has some that it just, that, that we've got reimbursed and the reimbursements went somewhere else. They went to a different fund and it wasn't properly accounted for in this fund. So i- i- and it's, it's a little bit of both. It's not, it's not all funds that failed, but there have been some of those. And we talked about those at, I think, my first meeting.
Right.
This is more just accounting that's not a best practice.
Correct.
And, uh, that's the majority of this one-point-seven million. Still, as it accrued, when we, when I saw it, I was, I was, I won't say, um, but it was, it was...
We're here. I think, I think we owe the public an explanation.
Yes.
Because you have entertained and people have come up and questioned why certain things were done and have been done. And I think this can answer to some of those questions. It can put some of, hopefully, those questions to bed. Um, I think it's proper, it's befitting, um, to do so. I mean, they have a right to know the truth.
I was alarmed when I saw the amount. Yeah, I, I was probably, it was probably nine-thirty at night. I was here on a Friday night and I saw the amount. And I was shocked. And, um, I was like, that's, that's it for me today. I'm gonna, I'm going home. And, um, and, and it came, and I came back and we started researching, why does it show one-point-seven million dollars?
Thank you.
In the hole. And this is what we, we found.
All right.
And there's, thank, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
No questions on this item. All right, let's entertain a, a motion. Let's entertain a motion.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to close the Grants Fund and transfer the negative fund balance to the appropriate enterprise fund.
Thank you. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of closing the Grant Funds and transferring the negative fund balance to the appropriate enterprise fund? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries three, one. Item three, I three, Resolution twenty-four dash forty-one.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Meade, Florida, directing the closure of the Mobile Home Park Enterprise Fund, authorizing the transfer of all assets from the Mobile Home Park Enterprise Fund to the General Fund and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Assistant City Manager Bert, please.
Madam Mayor, this is one item that really needs to be considered in light of several items. Some things we can do by resolution, some things we have to do by ordinance. However, it's all one conversation.
Yes.
And so this, this item is part of a conversation, um, to do with J one and J three. Oh, J one, J two, and J, J one and J two. J one, J two.
All right, so...
Would we like to read those into the record or are these the best practices?
In this case, I, my simple recommendation is just take it in turn. And that way, the public can follow along. Item, if it becomes redundant, uh, you may just have to, everyone decide to do that.
Okay.
Well, as a technical advisory, just as the Grants Fund, our CPA has recommended that we close the Mobile Home Enterprise Fund. I said, as it's currently being, um, as it's currently being used, it runs afoul of Gatsby, the Government Accounting Standards Board, um, because enterprise funds are expected to do one thing, and it's, this enterprise fund is no longer doing that. So technically, it should be closed, um, for, for that reason. Financially, though, also, our general fund reserve has dipped to a critical level. And I, I, I don't mean to cause alarm, but it is, it is critically low because of overspending on capital projects. And, uh, it is recommended by our CPA that we not only close the fund, but we transfer the assets to the funds that our reserves meet the minimum Gatsby levels. Recommended Gatsby levels.
All right. Any questions or comments?
He, uh, talking about the CPA. He was just here in January. He's talking to us. Why didn't he bring it up there?
Well, he did. He, he mentioned, um, well, well, he, he brought up some things. He didn't mention this fund at the time, uh, because he was reviewing the finances from the time that the Mobile Home Park was an active enterprise fund. Now that it is no longer an enterprise fund, now that the financials, we've moved forward to financials that this is no longer an enterprise fund, uh, the situation has changed. But one thing that he did say, and he stressed to me, and he will be coming here again to stress again, is that our enterprise funds have been losing money for the last three years. They've been in a negative cash flow position for the last three years. A- and this is evidence, we're gonna get to an item, this is evidence where we had to loan the Electric Fund three-hundred thousand dollars. This is our cash cow, borrowing money from the General Fund, because these, these enterprise funds have been losing money. They have not been... They've been losing money. And so this is where we are. To fix the problem, we need to move on back. Why he didn't mention it then, again, to answer that question, he wasn't discussing the financials, uh, the current financials. He was discussing the previous year's financials.
Don't we get somewhere around two-hundred thousand dollars a year in crystal for that fund?
It depends on what C, the C, the CD yield is. I know that it's in a very low earning, you know, but well, it's, it's not, it's enough CD earning about four-point-seven-five percent, so I'm not sure what that comes out to be. Maybe it's two-hundred thousand. The money wouldn't come out of the CD. The CD would transfer just to the fund. It's not like we're spending it. What we need to shore up our reserve. So technically, can we touch that money once it's in the General Fund? Yes, we can. If we don't have to, we won't. But really, it's, we've got the savings over here. It doesn't make sense that it's over here anymore. We need it over here for technical reasons, because our reserve balance has dropped to a critical level, so we just move it. I don't think we're gonna dip into it very much. We, I think we've accounted for our big project spending. We, we've worked really hard with the directors to make sure that, you know, uh, we don't have any surprises coming up. You know, emergencies happening, but I don't think we're gonna have these big surprises that we did one night, you know, just from a couple of months ago.
You know, we have one, I thought it was just, um, excuse me, that, uh, the interest goes to the fire department. We had some...
I, I, I think there was, I, I don't, I don't remember from the workshops last year. I think there were some talks that some extra revenue went to the fire department, but I don't think it was ongoing. I think it was a one-time transfer to the fire department, and I could be wrong on that. I haven't... It was a one-time transfer. Okay. There's the CD interest payments that go to the General Fund. But then there's the interest payments from the mo, from the note. And that goes to the mobile, or that goes to the fire, that goes to the, right. So it's not a fund, but it is the, the note.
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, can I speak?
Uh, yes, sir. Come on up, Mr. Bryant.
Roger Wright, forty-four hundred Highway ninety-eight, E. Now, this CPA does put in his report that the, uh, assets from either fund could go into a special separate revenue fund. It's on your fourth page, instead of the General Fund. So there is an option that the CPA does say. If I understand it correctly now, there's money in the enterprise fund and there's money in the trust fund. Am I not correct?
You're correct.
Okay. There's a hold open the option that if you decide to leave the trust fund as is, to be a moneymaker, the, um, the other fund could be added on top of that trust fund to make more interest. So, so there is an option. I mean, you can go, you can go three ways with this thing. Thanks.
All right. So here, again, um, in regards to this, you, you're saying our, um, General Fund is at a critical?
It's critically low. It, it is critically low because we've overspent in the ARPA, which we, we've corrected, and we've overspent in the Electric, which we have not corrected. That will be corrected at, uh, if the budget amendment passes, they will correct the budget, the, the spending in the Electric Fund. And it will bring our fund balance down to around, to less than four-hundred thousand dollars. Something else to consider, and I didn't want to bring it up, if we don't move this money back, we won't have the money, we won't have the cash allotted to go purchase this fire truck. The fire truck is supposed to be delivered in June. There's no, nowhere in, there's no cash available to pay for it. We need to be able to pay for it. So if we don't, if we don't have the money to pay for it, we're gonna lose the allocation, uh, from the state. So we have to move the money, because we have to pay for this truck, so that we can get reimbursed from the state and that we can shore up our fund reserves. Otherwise, we don't have means to do it.
Correct. And, and I understand what you're saying. And basically, it is, it's not a matter of, um, a metaphor saying if we move fund to this one, you're talking about cash on hand, that we can tangible put our hands on to use to make necessary purchases.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's enough. All right. Any further discussion? No further discussion? All right, um, I'm ready to entertain, uh, a motion on... We need to leave? No problem. Are we ready to entertain a motion on item, uh, agenda item three?
Sure. I do have one thing, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor.
Oh, nice.
So you're saying we don't have any other choice here? We're not gonna have the money if we don't do this. Is that what you're telling us?
What, what I'm telling you is if we don't move the money, your fund balance is gonna remain critically low. And when the third fire truck is ready to be delivered, we won't have the cash in our budget to pay for it. So you don't have to do it, but if you don't, your fund balance is gonna remain critically low and when the fire engine is, or apparatus, apologies, is ready.
Matt, when is that supposed to be here, yeah?
You may, yes.
Good evening. Uh, the current update for the apparatus is it's, uh, slated to be ready for delivery on the seventeenth. They're telling me three business days after that, so somewhere around the twentieth, it will actually be on city property.
Of May?
Of June. Actually, yes, I stand corrected.
Right. And, and in addition to that, not being able to pay for the apparatus, um, but state requires us to be at a certain threshold, correct? but state requires us to be at a certain threshold, correct?
There's, I've had this conversation several different ways with our CPA and CFO. They said there's no legal requirements, there's just recommendations.
Okay.
So the recommendation is that we would have our fund reserve over, over a million dollars.
Okay.
Are we still discussing? No. If not, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, if that's where we are now. I'd make like to make a motion to close the Mobile Home Park Enterprise Fund and transfer assets to the general fund.
We have a motion, is there a second? Is there a second? If there is no second, the motion will die, and we will not have any funds to pay for your fire truck. And our funds will be critically low.
May I ask, what's, what's the resistance? Is it because I'm bringing it forward?
There's nothing personal here, you know that.
Oh, sir, sir, we talked last week, and you said you were retired lawman, and you didn't know finance, and you were being recommended by someone who has a master's in finance and a CPA to close the fund. Please tell me the resistance, so I can satisfy.
I'm not a question at all. We're still going to have the, uh, the other fund, correct?
The mobile, the general fund?
No.
Yeah, absolutely, we can, we can just move the CD from the Mobile Home Park Trust Fund into the general fund. It's typing some things on a, on a, in a, in a system, there's no, the money moves on paper.
One, two, we can do it.
I got you. I'm not deaf, by the way, either, I'm not yelling at you, so you don't yell at me either.
I apologize, I apologize.
I'm not yelling at you.
Thank you all.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We have a motion, and we now have a second. Close the Mobile Home Park Enterprise Fund and transfer the assets to the general fund, if there is no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries three, one.
Commissioner, I apologize if I was yelling.
No problem.
All right, moving on to item J, one ordinance, 2024 dash zero eight budget amendment ordinance.
An emergency ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Fort Meade, Florida, approving the second amendment of the final budget for fiscal year 2023-2024, providing for severability and interpretation, providing for inclusion in the code, providing that officials are authorized to take action, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Post budget amendment fiscal year interim Burke, as it moves.
Madam Mayor, thank you. This is the continuation of the discussion we've been having. Simply, this formalizes some actions that have already happened, some actions that have already come before the commission. Also, I want to apologize about how this printed on a screen, it looked fine. When we, when it went to the book, it looks a little harder. Most of the budget amendment items are in, you know, they're contained within the fund, or moving from, you know, a capital account to an office supplies account, right? It's not, it's not going to affect the fund balance. And the big things, you already know about, you already know about the ARPA fund transfer. And the commission already knows about the, the payment, the loan to the electric fund, but it was just never budgeted. So it's already been done, the money's already been spent, it just hasn't, the proper financial records haven't been made. So all of this does is it, is it gets our financial house in order.
Any further discussion on this item? Questions? Question? Any questions, Commissioner Watts?
No.
Commissioner Scale?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Williams? All right, can I entertain a motion for ordinance 2024 dash zero eight budget amendment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2024 dash zero eight budget amendment ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero. Item J two.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Fort Meade, Florida, repealing ordinance number 2023 dash 24 that created a trust fund of deposit of any proceeds received by the city from the sale of the city mobile park and created section two dash 27 of the city code to create the trust fund and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Interim Burke?
Madam Mayor, this is a continuation of the discussion we've had. The resolution earlier allows the staff to close the Mobile Home Park Enterprise Fund. This repeals the ordinance that, that prevents the city from using the Mobile Home Park Enterprise or Trust Fund, and it will transfer to the, it will allow us to transfer it to the general fund.
Any further discussion? No? Commissioner Scale?
No.
Commissioner Watts? Okay. No? Are we ready to entertain a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I make a motion that, or a motion to repeal ordinance 2023 dash 24 Mobile Home Park Sell Proceeds Trust Fund. Two.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Is it the incorrect number, 2024? That I had the wrong option. Thank you.
2024, 2024, yes.
Apology.
All right, no problem.
I'd like to restate. I make a motion to repeal ordinance 2024 dash 24 Mobile Home Park Sell Proceeds Trust Fund.
All right, awesome. All right, is there a second?
I don't understand the motion. Ordinance 2024 oh nine, ordinance abolishing the, 24 oh nine is approving the abolishing of the whole, the whole.
Just two in one. 2024 oh nine, the ordinance.
Okay. So there may be a discrepancy inside of our agenda, we have 2023 dash 24, and then I see on the agenda, it's listed as 2024 dash zero nine.
Yes, that is the new ordinance, but it repeals ordinance 2023 dash 24.
That's the discrepancy.
Yeah.
That's the proper warning.
All right. Okay, can you restate it, please, sir? Thank you. Yes. I'd like to make a motion, let's get this right this time. All right. The motion is to approve ordinance 2024 dash zero nine, ordinance abolishing the Mobile Home Park Sell Proceeds Trust Fund.
We have a proper motion, is there a second? Is there a second? If there is no second, then what we just approved cannot happen, correct?
Correct, Madam Mayor.
If there is no second, we can't.
I understand that part of it. We're still going to have the trust fund, right?
This abolishes the trust fund, we'll still have the CD, we'll still have the money in the CD, but it won't be locked up. Now, once we move it, there's nothing to prevent the commission from locking it back up within the general fund, but it's locked up in the Mobile Home Enterprise Fund right now, which we need to close.
He says he doesn't like doing that. Speak up.
Okay.
So here's the thing, we can't have, we can't have our cake and ice cream and eat it too. It's either one or the other. We either, in my, from my perspective, we've been elected to do the hard things.
I understand.
It might not be the most favorable. And yeah, that people are going to have an opinion about it, whether we do it or whether we don't. If we don't do it, then we're going to have people complaining, it's a shame that we didn't do it, and now that beautiful apparatus that we agreed that we wanted and ordered, we approved the order, it's a shame that we can't take hold of it. Because we're in support of our now full-fledged, almost fire department. So we can't have it both ways. Unfortunately, this is the, it's not unfortunate. Fortunately, we are in a position to do the hard things. I'm for doing the hard things, even though it comes with backlash. We'll get through it. It's not anyone's fault in this room, we're financially in the predicament that we're in. When the questions should have been asked, they were not being asked. Now, all of a sudden, we have transparency and accountability. Now, everyone has questions as to why we're doing what we're doing. Previously, there were a lot of things that got us to this very point where we are now. No one ever questioned. No one questioned. I questioned, I got ignored. No one in the audience questioned why funds were being moved, why we had emergency executive changes, and things were being purchased, and all that. No one had questions in the audience. Now we have questions. Now that the truth is being revealed of where we are financially, I think we're doing a disservice to the person we have appointed to step in as interim, to really help us clearly define where we are financially. Those are one of the things that I asked him if he were capable of doing. He has the business acumen, financial understanding of where we are to do this very thing. And so now that we have a clear picture of where we are financially, we have a hard time absorbing it and accepting it as factual. But in the past, no one questioned. And I think the more we know where we are, the better we know how to navigate and move forward. We cannot continue to operate, spend money that we don't have. And if this is a situation that preferably is just a one-time thing, that will modify so that we can take care of our pending purchases, so that we can now have a fund that is balanced. We're getting ready to move towards our, our budget proceedings. And with all of this being laid out, we know where we are, now we know how we can move forward. But we have got to get there, we have, we have to get our books balanced. This is a testament that for years, our books have not been balanced. We've been told one thing, but there's been something totally different going on behind our backs. This commission as well as the citizens, and we've accepted it. And now we have somebody that's saying, hey, we're laying it all out, we find it hard to believe. We've lived so long with the lie, we believe that that was true. And now that we have the truth, we have a hard time accepting it. Wake up, folks, this is where we are. And unfortunately, we have to do a hard thing today, and I think it is necessary for us to move forward in the right direction. So if we don't approve this, we just negate it, well, you just second. We just negate it.
What, you say we're going to move this fund, is that going to bear interest also?
There, there's a CD, the money's in a CD.
Okay.
And all we're going to do is we're going to go into our system of record and say it's no longer in the Mobile Home Park Trust Fund, that CD now belongs to the general fund. That's it. There's, we're not going to the bank, we're not transferring money. It's an internal accounting function that moves this money to the general fund. That's all.
It's not like he's putting it in his pocket, taking it home.
We've been audited every year, and we're not balanced.
Would you please explain, sir, for the public, what you share with me about the City of Fort Meade having more than one book?
The city for the last several years has been operating off of what I describe as.
He's listening, you can't tell me anything right now, woman of the highest. I've asked interim Burke to speak, because it is something that we did not want to divulge, but apparently, this commission is unaware of it.
Well, and I did, I believe I sent a memo on this a week or so ago, when it became apparent of our situation. And the situation is this, we have our audited books, they come back and they look good every year, and that's because we've got a great CPA. And what our CPA does is he takes our operating books, and he makes the proper adjustments, so that it'll pass by audit. Now, there's no fraud, it's just bad bookkeeping. And then he will instruct our staff to make the end-of-year journal entries, or the required journal entries into our system. Well, those just haven't been done. And so for so long, the staff has been presenting this commission with financial statements that don't align with the actual financial position of the city. And I don't think anybody did it maliciously, but it's just been done. And it's unfortunate. But yes, we've had our audited books and our operating books, and they, they, there are material differences between the two. And there is going to be an audit presentation coming up, I believe it'll be done in the next month. There are expected to be some findings on that audit, and I'll let the CPAs present those findings when they're ready.
Thank you. So now that that cat's out the bag, where do we stand with this ordinance, 2024 dash zero nine? There has been a motion, I am still, I would hope that we could entertain a second.
Madam Mayor, you did say that the audience never want to ask any questions, I would like to ask a question.
Go ahead, ask your question for the third time.
I was ignored. The enterprise fund, approximately how much money is in it?
The Mobile Home Enterprise Fund, or which one? Do we have?
Not, not the trust fund.
Well, the trust fund is part of the enterprise fund, it's housed within the enterprise fund, so it's not a separate fund. There's the Mobile Home Enterprise Fund, and within that is the Mobile Home Trust Fund of this $800,000 and so on. So one is, is within the other. So if we're closing the enterprise fund, we also must do something with the trust fund. Because the trust fund doesn't exist on its own.
Okay. I was thinking that the enterprise fund was funds operating, an operating expense fund that the Mobile Home Park had over the years, and nothing had ever been done with it, but that's not the case.
That's not the case. No, the trust fund is housed within the enterprise fund.
Okay, thanks.
There's been a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor of adopting ordinance 2024 dash zero nine, repealing ordinance 2023 dash 24, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries three, one. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Yeah, well, we can't let him out, Cassie, we can't let him out.
Alright, we're ready to reconvene? Alright, moving, um, along with now item J three?
Now, ma'am, can I make one more comment on, on what we're gonna let go of that fire truck? We do have appropriations of a million dollars, up to a million dollars on the fire truck. So whatever fund we pay for, I do, I'll be paying for it, the money is coming back. It is a pure appreciation. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct, yeah, that, that's re, it is refunded to us.
That needs to be clarified.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, item J three? Twenty five.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Fort Meade, Florida, amending the City of Fort Meade Code of Ordinances to repeal Part K, Sections twenty-six dash ninety-six through twenty-six dash ninety-eight, repeal Article six, twenty-six dash two oh one, and repeal Article seven, Section twenty-six dash two thirty-one, to adopt Part K, Sections twenty-six dash ninety-six dash twenty-six one eleven, to adopt flood hazard maps, designate a floodplain administrator to adopt procedures and criteria for development in flood hazard areas to amend Chapter six, Building and Building Regulations to amend the Florida Building Code, and for other purposes, providing for severability, providing for copy we kept on file with the city clerk, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for applicability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Interim City Manager Burke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is a companion item to, um, H zero three. The Florida Division of Emergency Management, the Office of Floodplain Management, has notified us that we need to update our ordinance. This, these ordinance changes came directly from, uh, the state and were presented to council for them to adopt into our code. So, recommended by the state to adopt this change.
There's no amendments to, from the state. What the state sent us?
What the state sent us is what's here.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
They were just some scribbled errors that was, that were corrected, but in some...
Will they change content?
Correct.
Yes, pardon, that's no question.
Yes, sir.
Alright, any further discussion? Ready to entertain a motion?
May I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four, uh, dash twelve, amending floodplain management regulation?
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, for, to adopt our ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one-two, amending the floodplain management regulation. No further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero. Alright, item K, public hearings.
This is the second reading of this ordinance?
Yes.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Meade, Florida, amending portions of Chapter twenty-six, Article five, Part C of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Meade, Florida, Entitled Planning and Zoning Board, amending Section twenty-six dash one forty-one, entitled organization to amend the matter in which planning and zoning board members are appointed at the term of their service, providing for conflict, severability, codification, and an effective date.
Thank you, sir. This is our second reading, um, for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero six. Now open for public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak on this item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Can you hear me, uh, if I'm talking?
I can, yeah, and I think Mr. Wine called.
Can the audience hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, Ben Spade, six thirteen Northeast Third Street. Relative to the changes of the Planning and Zoning Board, the single commissioner taking an idea through the city manager to the attorney to draw up a new ordinance does not appear to be transparent. We've been a lot of talk about transparency lately. The fact that no other commissioner knows anything about this ordinance changes till they get their packet days before the first reading is leaving those commissioners and the public in the dark for a whole month. Myself and the rest of the public knows nothing about one commissioner's idea, and said idea comes to the commission as an already drafted ordinance, and the fact that said ordinance completely terminates this current board, the current planning and zoning board, all of which in terminology, uh, is being more transparent and is, is not. I have said many times, it takes a motion in me of the entire commission to turn an idea into something formal. The passage, the passage of that motion actually starts a process, action being taken. The fact that at the first reading of this ordinance, when I asked where this ordinance originated, the city manager asked the mayor if she wanted to tell me or should he? Does this fact indicate that our, that our mayor actually knew also about the workings of this ordinance while other members of the commission were still completely in the dark, does not seem to be transparent appearance? Uh, the fact that a house on South Morrison Street was permitted and planned as a single-family residential, but was built as a duplex by deception? The fact that the minutes of the February twenty-third, twenty-one, nineteen, two thousand twenty-one commission meeting showed the first reading of two ordinances, both relating to changing the city's zoning to allow duplexes to be built in R one C, which is single-family residential? The fact that both commissioners, Barry and McCutcheon, voted in favor of these changes while other commissioners voted with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board to not allow this change from R one C? Should we be asking the question of restructuring the planning and zoning boards in attempt to allow duplexes all over our fair city, possibly across the street from you, wherever you may be? I have personally heard from the staff, Mr. 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 King, that we must put a structure on every vacant lot in Fort Meade, and since duplexes do not get home state exemption, the city will receive more tax dollars. I agree that growth is important, but growth has to have forethought and certain boundaries. Should we be asking the question why Mrs. McCutcheon and Mr. Barry will get two picks each for the nominees to the Planning and Zoning Board, while other commissioners only get one pick? And do we not forget that our selection for the P and Z board will have to be approved by the commission? Also, we should know that the current chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board has been on this board for almost thirty years, why has he not been replaced? His employment with the Department of Transportation...
Yeah, that's your time.
Time up, it's a time up. Respect for time up.
That's your time.
You went over. You went over.
Thank you.
You guys were gonna have it, uh, starting the time before, while we're saying...
Will there be anyone else wish to address the commission on this item?
That's on your time, not our time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Will there be anyone else wish to speak on this item? It is open for public hearing. If there is no one else, the public hearing on this item is closed. Any further discussion from any member of the commission?
I'm curious why we're doing this. I mean, the Planning and Zoning Board's been on it a long time, and they got some great members on it. I don't see nothing wrong with what we have on it.
And Madam Mayor, I'd like to also address, um, so I, I've, I've been approached to have conversations with a couple of individuals who have expressed interest in serving on the Planning and Zoning Board. And they were, um, were told, I guess through their inquiry with past administrations, that there wasn't an opportunity to serve. And I think we have to just really examine our approach of, well, we've been doing it this way for a long time, so why don't we just continue to do it this way? We have other talented individuals who are educated and capable. One of these individuals has a degree in this area. So I think in moving our town forward and creating more opportunities, we should extend, uh, we should extend an opportunity for people to serve in areas that they have expertise. Commissioners still have an opportunity to vote for, to suggest who they'd like to serve. And, and again, being approached, one gentleman is, is in his forties, and the other is in his early fifties. I think it's just important to the vitality and the life of our town that we continue to create opportunities for people who desire to serve.
Well, I, I concur with Commissioner Williams. I think just as this, uh, commission is, um, one that we vote on and is ever-changing or evolving, I think too that, um, part of the reason, not the only, part of the reason we, um, our downtown corridor, our Dr. MLK corridor, uh, and other areas in our city, I think remain in the state that they have been for the past thirty, forty years, maybe even some, could be a testament to planning and zoning. Um, laws change, um, things, uh, get amended. And I think we need to develop a mindset to where we're gonna be open, um, to change. I think change is good, it's not always a bad thing. Just because that's the way we've always done it, doesn't mean that has to, that has to be the way that it is always done. So, that, that's just my opinion on that, I, I think change is good.
My biggest issue, which is the, uh, two votes of the mayor, my biggest issue is the two votes of the mayor, or two nominations for the mayor, and say, uh, vice mayor. I don't think that's right, they have no power than any other commissioner.
It was fair when you were mayor.
How long we feel like that?
If you, if you wish to speak, sir, you have to come to the podium, sir. Alright, well, I, I don't know how long it's been like that, I can't answer that question.
How, it wasn't even one? I don't see it.
I, I, I don't even, to be honest with you, I'm not even aware of how the Planning and Zoning Committee comes about.
Oh, I know that, I'm, I'm, I still talk about the two votes. The Perry Bill, who's nominated and voted on by, uh, we actually, the first time we had, last time we shook it up, it was advertised, four members, and, uh, and the commission selected, voted on who was going to attend.
Oh, that must've been before I got here.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, it had to be a long time ago, because I haven't voted on anybody on planning and zoning since I've been here.
When we looked at the records, it appears that the previous mayor appointed all the, all members, and it was voted on by the commission. This change allows every commissioner to have a vote, and it also incentivizes the mayorship, to have more than one vote, so it's, it's, it's an incentive to put your name in the hat, to, to have a robust exchange of ideas, make, you know, that, so it, it seems more equitable this way.
Yeah, that seems pretty equitable.
Mr. Attorney? Yes, is it legal opinion?
Sir, we can't hear you.
Is there a question, Mr.?
Yeah, is it, uh, is it legal, compliant to, uh, ethics board of the mayor getting, and the vice mayor getting two nominations?
Whatever this commission votes on is a majority as to how it is going to appoint members to any board it creates with advisory or charter is legal.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess what he was just saying was basically the last time you guys made appointment, the mayor appointed all of the planning and zoning, and the commission voted. So, I guess he had more power than the current mayor would have. It happened way before you?
The, the way the ordinance is structured is that the mayor makes the appointment, pays the nomination for all of them, and then the commission, uh, ratifies that nomination.
So, this, so that would strip the me, the mayor, of appointing all of the planning and zoning. That means everyone on the commission gets a say in who they would like to nominate for the P and Z. So it, it does get, does not give me currently, the mayor, total control. So it, it does get, does not give me currently, the mayor, total control.
And it also creates, I believe, transparency, ma'am. I mean, it gets continually reviewing this board. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna bring it back, we're gonna re-nominate, and if people are serving well, they're gonna stay, if they're not, they're gonna go. So it, it keeps this board, the board membership continually in front of the residents at least once a year.
Right. So, and it's open for all to apply should, should we pass? Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes, criteria for, for the applicants, what their knowledge and abilities are?
Yes, it's in the ordinance. You will have to come to the, to the front now and state your name and address for the record.
Just got one question. Want to wipe her take fifty softest hand. So if this ordinance does not pass, that mean you, the mayor, will get to appoint everybody on the P and Z for the future?
That's a great question. I guess I'll move it because the ordinance will remain the same.
Okay.
In general, yeah?
So, sorry, so that's correct.
What this, what this ordinance is doing is very simple. It's basically looking to take the existing ordinance and amending it from what it's currently designed to do, which is provide that the mayor appoints the entire board and commission votes it up or down. This changes it to diversify the appointments through the entire board with the exception that the mayor gets an additional appointment. So that's, it's actually creating more transparency and actually providing more input and diversification amongst board members.
Thank you for clarification, sir. Any further discussion? Commissioner Gail?
No.
Commissioner Watts?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
None.
All right, ready to entertain a motion? On item K one?
Yes, Madam Mayor, make a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero six, ordinance amending chapter twenty-six, members of the planning and zoning board.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Quick question, Attorney. Did we close the public hearing?
I did.
Okay, I've got just a little situation. Just a second, just a second.
Is there a second? If there's no second, motion dies, and our current ordinance will remain intact.
All right, take it back.
Moving right along, item K two.
An ordinance of the city of Fort Meade, Florida, amending chapter seventeen of the code of ordinances of Fort Meade, Florida, to create article four thereof entitled Arts in Public Places Advisory Committee, to create an Art in Public Places Advisory Committee, creating an art in public fund, providing for ownership and maintenance of public art, providing for conflict, severability, codification, and an effective date.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll open this item up for a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak on this item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. If no one wishes to come forward, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from any members of the commission?
I have nothing, Madam Mayor.
You have nothing? Okay. All right. Anything, interim city manager, Bert?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion.
What do I, what do I entail? This committee, this board, or this, this committee isn't, this art in public places or?
Yes, arts in public places.
Arts in public places. Okay.
So it, the purpose of this board is, and it's been, we've received some positive feedback from it, we've had people asking to apply for it. So it's simply a committee, a board that gets together that says, hey, where could we put art in public places? It's designed to beautify the community, attract businesses, you know, all of that. So that's.
Who have, when they had the full authority of they take a, take a plan?
They're an advisory board, sir.
Okay. So they could, would come back?
Correct, yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ready to entertain a motion, sir.
Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four oh seven, ordinance amending chapter seventeen of the city code of ordinances to create an arts in public places advisory committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero seven. No further discussion. All in favor of this ordinance signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero. All business. Item L one, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-nine, transferring city-owned properties to the CRA. All right, and city manager, Bert?
A resolution, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Fort Meade, Florida, approving the transfer of city-owned properties located at thirty-six Broadway Street West, parcel identification number twenty-five dash thirty-one dash twenty-seven dash four six eight zero 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 dash zero 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 one two, and one fifteen Broadway Street West, parcel identification number twenty-five dash thirty-one dash twenty-seven dash forty-six seventy-five zero zero dash zero 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 nine zero to the community redevelopment agency, agreement and providing for an effective date.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a carryover item from last meeting. It was tabled and asked to be brought back. It is being brought back. So there was some discussion on it before. I know that we are short on time, so I'll get, get the cliff, cliff notes on this. Basically, if, the commission needs to decide, are we going to activate the CRA and use it for its intended purpose, or are we not? And these properties are in the CRA, they belong, I believe they belong to the CRA, and the CRA can do more with them. Now, I know that the resistance to that is the proceeds would go to the CRA and not to the city, and that's correct, and I think that's right. I think we want to put more money into the CRA so that the CRA can put more money to eliminate slum and blight in our community. That, we hear so much about these, the businesses being closed on Main Street and MLK. This is the first step in putting a plan in place, putting money and resources in place to address that.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Any questions, Commissioner Gail?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Watts?
This is, these two properties in general.
Correct, yes, sir.
Do you need further discussion, Commissioner Williams?
None.
None? All right. And so what, what would be the next steps for us as a board? What would be our pleasure?
Are you asking me, Madam Mayor?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Well, we'll still act as the CRA board, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So it is this, so would it, would it be our desire to transfer the properties, it should be the question, to the CRA or otherwise?
Yes, and, and, and is this by, by motion, do we need to, is it a motion or just, okay, awesome?
It's our desire.
Yes, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-four dash twenty-eight, sorry, twenty-four dash twenty-nine, transferring city-owned properties to the CRA.
Can I hear?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of adopting resolution twenty-four dash twenty-nine, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, item two, resolution two four dash two eight.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Fort Meade, Florida, approving the engagement of Kirk Wheeler and the I to conduct appraisals for city-owned commercial properties located at thirty-six Broadway Street West and one fifteen Broadway Street West, providing for allocation of funds in the amount of thirty-four hundred dollars and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, I believe two meetings ago, the commission asked me to obtain quotes for appraisals. These are the quotes. I don't know now that the, the commission has voted to transfer the property, if this is, is now moved, but it is now for you to decide whether, what you'd like to do with this.
Well, I, I think we vote the appraisals anyway because we both, if we were to sell them, we would like to know what they were, what they're marketed at.
I, I think I would like to see basically use, usage for the property and, and the, the plans to repurpose this property. You know, an overall strategic plan, say for instance, now that it belongs to the CRA, what are some ways and means we can get the full benefit out of the CRA having ownership of this property and repurposing?
Yes, ma'am.
So ideas with that, so I don't really want to help them do an appraisal.
That, that's up to the commission whether they, they want an appraisal or not, and, and quite frankly, if it's been transferred to the CRA, I think that question should come back to the CRA board, whether the CRA board wants an appraisal, because if the CRA has been received the benefit of the property, the CRA should also pay for the appraisal. So I, I don't think that the city should pay for the appraisal because the CRA now controls the property, or will control the property. But we could bring, I'm happy to bring that to the CRA board for your consideration.
Yes, sir.
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Oh, sure. Take a five-minute recess.
I got the deputy to try to get us, get his king.
Yes, thank you. Even I can try to get.
He's taking. He wasn't. I started cheating again. I'm sorry. 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 All right, we're ready to reconvene. We were on item, uh, to L two, deciding whether or not the city would pay for the appraisals of thirty, of, for properties on Broadway. And now that it is owned by the CRA, I'm of the opinion that the CRA, if they decide that they want to have the buildings appraised, that they can pay for that.
Madam Mayor, I believe that, that we consider this item of appraisals when referred to the CRA board.
All right, so clarify that for me again.
When it's presented to the CRA, since they have the properties, who will have the properties, they should make a decision.
Should I withdraw that?
Yeah.
I think it would be easier if I just withdrew the item, and we'll bring it back to the CRA.
Okay, okay. All right, so item two is going to be withdrawn, and we'll bring it back to the CRA. All right, great. Item L three?
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Fort Meade, Florida, approving the reallocation of community development block grant COVID virus funds and authorizing development and implementation of programs to address COVID nineteen impacts and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir. All right, interim city manager, Bert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the interest of time, the challenges with this are that when, and I sent out everyone a memo on it, I think a week or two, maybe even two weeks ago, when we got the CBG CV broadband grant, there was not sufficient broadband coverage in the city. Due to this three-year delay, now the FCC maps show that there is broadband coverage to the city, so in the city. Because of the grants duplication of benefits clauses, we can't spend money on broadband if the residents already have broadband. Now, there's ways, we can challenge it, we can challenge the maps, it's a, it's a challenging process. This recommends that we take a dual approach, that we see how we can challenge the maps, but we also look at other alternatives, and we would like to bring back those alternatives for your consideration, but we need your permission to review the alternatives. And the alternatives can be anything from helping with rent utility payments, to micro loans and grants to small businesses, to putting into community centers. So there's, there's a lot of options, and I'd like to fully explore those with Fred Fox, Panoni, and, and the state.
That was, how much was it, five million?
This is five million.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, because I'm, I'm perplexed myself. I mean, I know I reached out to a provider, and they don't provide broad, they don't provide broadband to me, so I'm trying to figure out who and where it is so I can get it, because I don't have it. That's just it. I'm, I'm very curious as to where these findings are, who owns this, where is it, and how can I tap into it?
Yeah, the FCC maps are really clear on who owns it, the broadband speed to each house, charter pretty much, when you look at the maps, it says charter has, has blanketed the city, and they've got speeds of twelve hundred. So that's, that's the FCC maps. I can't say whether they're correct or not, but it's the FCC maps, and so if we want to challenge them, we're gonna have to get, we're gonna have to jump through some hoops to challenge them.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
Which handles?
Correct.
So in essence, if, like you said, you could bring back to see if it can be duly purposed, because I know there was a limited time on when these funds could be used?
That's correct.
And so we're near the end of that, but I thought a certain thing, we got an extension of some sort to figure it out.
Your extension?
We've got an eighteen, we did receive an eighteen-month extension. Right now, we're probably got sixteen months left. My fear is that we continue to pursue broadband and then it fails, and then we've got to start over, and then we'll have no time. So if we can come up with a dual path to protect the original intent the best we can, but have a backup plan in place at the same time.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion on item three? Done, all right. Entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make motion to approve resolution twenty-four forty-two, repurposing CBBG, uh, CV grant.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, no further discussion. All in favor of adopting resolution twenty-four dash forty-two, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, item L four?
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Fort Meade, Florida, authorizing the mayor, interim city manager, and other designated representatives to apply for and execute documents related to the USDA rule Development Water and Wastewater Grant for Stormwater and Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, this is a carryover item from last time. Commissioner Barry and wanted some additional clarification on other designated signees. This explains that, that with the FRWA staff, they can go into our grants and make, you know, technical changes, but they cannot bind the city financially for, you know, anything. So it's basically, as a technical advisory, it allows them to, to make changes that we need within their. So it's basically as a technical advisory, it allows them to to make changes that we need within their system.
All right, any further discussion? Commissioner Watts? Commissioner Williams? I don't have any further questions in regards to this item. No further questions. All right, I entertain a motion. Item four, Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-four.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-four, authorizing the mayor interim city manager and other designated representatives to apply for and execute documents related to the USDA rural development water and wastewater grant and for stormwater mitigation.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
It's gonna prompt the motion in second. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero. Item five.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lee, Florida, authorizing the interim city manager to enter into a temporary license agreement with Retroflow LLC for installation and testing of post-wastewater treatment technology at the city's wastewater treatment facility and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, I have Tommy King here to answer questions about this if you if we need. I know this was tabled at the last meeting. This is a conference report that says what we're we're trying to accomplish here, and I, Mr. King is here to answer questions about it if you'd like.
So what this is, is a someone has asked if they could use our our wastewater plant to perform a pilot for some new technology that removes nitrogen and phosphorus. This is something that's coming out of the EPA and here we talk about all the algae blooms and everything, they they target nitrogen and phosphorus as as part of that issue. This will also help us if this technology works out and is beneficial, it could potentially come to us with our permitting, you know, going going forward. But it's some new technology. The thing I like about it is it, it's no, no chemicals involved. It's all mechanical and magic, so.
You support it?
I do, I do support it, at least trying it.
I know we talked about last meeting what was.
So there is no, there's, it will not degrade our current quality of our effluent. The only thing it would do is improve it if it if it works. Which is a feather in the cap.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Scandal?
Who am I?
Commissioner Williams? All right, I have no further discussion. Ready to entertain a motion? Is there a motion to adopt twenty-four?
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt L O five.
Okay, what resolution is it, sir?
Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-four dash three-one. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a proper motion in second, no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Item L six. City manager search. All right.
This is a discussion item, so there's no resolution, Madam Mayor. I'm going to recuse myself from discussion. Our, our HR director, risk management director is here to answer questions if you need.
Thank you. I'm well, I'm well. Hi, hi. So i- is it, are these the only three applicants that applied? Or were there others that applied that withdrew?
I'm not aware of any that withdrew.
Okay.
I do need to make a correction on the agenda of item J six.
Okay.
I was reviewing it earlier. There's in the middle, it says ten candidates. Just for clarification, it's gonna be twenty applicants. One of them was a duplicate. It brings it to nineteen applicants on the last posting. And out of those nineteen applicants, four have been selected to move forward, and they are listed in this paragraph below.
Okay.
In fairness, George is not here during the during the city manager search.
Right, right.
So the four here are the ones, the applicants that came after the the last opening. So the the previous resumes have been reviewed and decided, and so this is correct, this is the last batch that that has that has come.
Okay, all right, awesome. Okay. Well, I'm, I mean, I'm
Did we, did we cut, there's a commission, did we cut out the four? Did we move four forward or?
No, no, this is
Yeah, twenty applicants.
Right, but that those twenty applicants have already come before the commission, so and that led to the offer to the previous so, and then we reopened the requisition after, and then these were the the applicants that came when we reopened the requisition.
Okay, so there are new individuals?
Correct.
Okay, that's
Yeah.
They weren't part of the old batch?
Correct, this is correct.
The one from Haynes City that is now in North Florida, he called me last night at home about nine twenty and talked to me about thirty minutes. I don't know how he got my number.
He called me today.
Today.
It's public record.
I I read that, but I didn't know, you know, but anyway, I think he's worth looking into. He sounded very faithful and he's been the city manager for about some time. And he was the city manager in North Florida. And then he left, and then and they they took his back, so. He must have liked him then. He went to Haynes City, that's why I left.
How did they let go in Haynes City?
Who's let go at Haynes City? I got to call him to Morse West today. I really know him. And he came to me calling me back, but he left and left, and so I'm gonna get with him tomorrow. It's good, man.
I was thinking I'd call him Morse too.
Morse, can you speak to the four and how you Thank you.
So if you don't have a copy of J six, let us know, we'll get your copy. Out of the nineteen applicants, we were able to do some extensive narrowing down, looking at their resumes with their experience. And we were able to compile the four that had the most experience for this role of the city manager. Moving forward, after we selected the four that had the most experience for that role, we then reached out to those potential candidates to make sure, because there has been quite a significant time that has lapsed, to make sure they're still interested in moving forward with any possible next steps. And this week, they did say that they were interested, only one of them that we listed was not responsive to that call.
So these were did come out of visual badge?
These My understanding that these came after, and again, I've recused myself, I maybe I shouldn't have spoken.
No, so I can, maybe I can help with some clarification. On a start date of January tenth, and it ended February ninth, there was in that timeframe, a total of twenty applicants. One of them was a duplicate. And now we're at nineteen during that timeframe.
I agree with this issue.
Okay. That is
This four came out of that batch.
And and I do remember that prior to interim city manager Burke being selected for the current role that he is in, we did review applicants, and the commission did not see anybody that they were interested in. And so therefore, we reopened it, and I think these applicants, the applications came in, but we never went back to them because interim city manager Burke Burke was in, is now in that role. And so I think that's how we arrived here. Just to clarify, because at that time, we we had to have somebody in the spot, because the previous interim's time was up. And so we had to, we had to fill the vacancies. And so and now we're drawing nigh to the end, near the end of this current interim's contract, right? Do you have the date of that? Do you know the date of that?
I do not have that with me.
Do you know the date of that, sir? Sorry to ask you.
Till July twenty-first, I think.
Okay, July twenty-first. Okay, all right, so we have a couple of months left. All right, and so this is what we have left to deal with. All right, so again, I went through, I did go through what we have here. I agree with Commissioner Scale in regards to it, as far as qualifications, Mr. Edward Walker Dean does have great qualifications based upon his resume. I did speak with Mayor West of Haynes City regarding Mr. Walker and the reason for his termination. And I guess it's, he basically said he came in on three-two vote, and I guess he went out on one. So I guess they
Without cause.
There, it was something to do with the fact of spending some money on some meals. So that's all, that's all, that's all I got. So, but, you know, I think in the short time that he was
I thought I looked up without cause, so.
Yeah, and in the short time that he was there in Haynes City, he was able to acquire significant funding for economic development.
Yeah, I said I talked to him before, I was
Okay.
It's what we had, out of what we had offered.
All right, so what what we will of the commission in regards to the candidates that we have here? Is anyone interested in bringing anyone in for interview via Zoom, via Skype, bringing them in person, getting our HR personnel further direction in regards to the city manager search?
I would like to interview that gentleman.
Okay.
I'd like to interview him in person.
In person, okay. All the gentlemen's or what we have here, or are you want to narrow that down?
I'd I'd like to narrow it down. I I think there was another one in there. I don't have him in front of me. But I liked him.
Okay, which one?
Well, I don't have him in front of me.
Okay.
I don't remember his name. I didn't know who wanted this tonight, so.
All right, so if we wanted to schedule interviews, we have to set aside a time and date to, in order to do so, to give the HR personnel direction when to schedule those, look at a couple of different dates of availability. And and I don't know if setting a date would be proper, being that the fact that we do have one commissioner out, I don't know what what the what his will is or his availability. Moving forward.
I suggest that we that the huge resource manager contact the applicant and find out whether they may be available. And give us a couple of dates to get back with us, so then, yeah, that could even be a call vote.
Yes.
He'll be available for these dates.
All right.
I know that one's from Las Vegas. I don't think we need to bring him in except Zoom, because I don't want to spend any money on that.
I agree.
I would, I would volunteer to go out there and get them in person.
All right, okay, so
Just for clarification, another applicant is in Tennessee.
Another applicant is in Tennessee.
That's, who is he, the one?
Robbie Steiger.
All right. I'm definitely okay with doing interviews via via Zoom. That way, save us money on both ends. So what we can do, if you don't mind, if the will of the commission, whatever you guys desire, if we can look at a couple of different dates, checking with the commissioners to see if we're available first, and if we are, get with the candidate. A choice to see if they're available as well.
And just for clarification on my side, did the commission narrow it down from four tonight? Or do you want a Zoom interview of all four applicants?
Well, like we did last time, we Zoom interviewed and then cut and brought one or two in.
We brought two in.
Oh, there's two, yeah. We did Zoom, and we might can make a selection out of the Zoom.
Yeah.
And if we can't, then we can buy a minute for need to.
Sir, sounds good for me, sir. So looking to some dates to schedule Zoom for the candidates, the four. Or the three, because one did not respond.
You're correct, thank you.
Any further questions, comments, discussion, all right? Thank you. All right, new business. N one, discussion item credit card purchase report. Interim city manager Burke.
At the last commission meeting, it was requested that we would provide a credit card purchase report. We have included this here for your review. We do have some findings here. One thing that was, that we found that was alarming was that certain employees and commissioners that were no longer with the city still had an active credit card account. We did cancel those cards, we did deactivate those cards, but they were still active when we ran the report. There was no spending from those separated employees and individuals, but it still just, we weren't, we did have them And so the report has the findings and recommendations. What questions does the commission have about the credit card spending? And we did not do an, an, a forensic audit. This is just a very high-level view of the transaction.
I didn't say anything that was inappropriate at the time you were, but charge is yours.
Right, I mean, meals, meals can be expected of travel.
Okay, yeah, I I I found it kind of alarming too, the fact that separated employees still had credit cards and, you know, I guess it's neither here nor there why. But I also would like to know, moving forward, are we going to establish rules for for spending and purchases? I know I had, I was, when I was installed, I was given a credit card only when I traveled. Right? And I know certain department heads have credit cards or what have you, I I get that, but are we going to set up perimeters for how and what? And how much?
I love rules, Madam Mayor. You guys see what I write and send to you, and so I mean, I I would love to establish some administrative rules on credit card purchases. I've done this in the past with the different organizations, and I, if there's some time, I can implement some some best practice rules for credit card usage and reimbursements.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I I'd like to see that.
It's making it harder to do with any budget, like per se.
You gotta put your mic down.
If they go to a conference, you know, look to where it's staying at. Sometimes the meal in the at restaurants might be a lot over what we, ten dollars, fifteen dollars, twenty-five dollars, well.
Yeah, so, yeah, per diem.
Reasonable per diem. Sure, absolutely. Reasonable per diem would be established, of course.
Yes, I I I'm actually, so, and and in regards to the per diem that you're speaking about, you know, when I see charges at Benihana's and other restaurants on city cars, I am a little perplexed. As as to the amount, what what I really want to get clarification on is in regards to legal or ethics, I don't know where it falls. So I'm, the question specifically, as I'm looking at Mr. King's credit card expenditures, are there any legal concerns for the city to authorize or use city-owned funds at a business or company owned by a sitting commissioner? As as I'm looking at the credit card expenses.
Oh, I see, I understand the question.
Does that make sense, or I can restate the question if it doesn't?
Can the city spend money at the establishment of a sitting commissioner? Can the city spend money um, at the establishment of a sitting commissioner?
Correct, mo- multiple expenses.
That is a legal question that I will defer to council.
I don't have an answer off the top of my head, I have to look at that. Uh, that usually does not come up interestingly enough, that's pretty rare. Uh, I can take a look at it and send you all, I'm gonna move on to, um, I don't have the answer right now, so I'll have to research it.
Got it, I'll tell you that at baseline, and I'm almost done. At baseline, if there's not any legal, if it is legal, um, I am highly concerned um, ethically, why um, there are charges um, at car dealerships uh, owned by s- then sitting commissioners. And I also would like clarification to know
I'm, I'm, I can, I can tell.
Thank, oh, thank you, because I, I was asking a specific legal question and then stating that I, there are ethical concerns.
Let, let, I think the best approach to this is, let me get the answer first. Um, if I understand your question is whether or not there is any ethical prohibition for a staff person, or actually a member of the municipality, spending municipal funds at an establishment that is owned by a commissioner, one, and in that regard, someone else that is employed by the city.
Correct, correct.
I mean, is that
Yeah, can, can, can I speak on this though? Because I guess I, I wasn't sure if it was your credit card, but now I'm hearing it's my credit card. So the que- what, your, the question is, why was funds spent um, at the Chevrolet dealership?
No, that wasn't the question.
No.
No. But, but the attorney, uh, our counsel understood the question.
Right, I mean, I think, I think the question overall is, what, if any, rules regulate the expenditure of municipal funds to either, one, establishments that are owned and operated by elected officials? And in the same token, two, by municipal staff and employees, so it would also be the same question, essentially.
I didn't answer this, I'm
Okay, yes, cool.
If you're gonna ask the question, I think we need to know the question in all scenarios, so that everybody understands what the rules of the world are.
Good, and
I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, I, I'll look for that information. Um, I'd also like to make a request, uh, City Manager. Uh, do we have a list of, of, of our inventory of the city-owned fleet? Do, do, do we have a list of, of that currently?
We should have a capital schedule, uh, whether, I, I have not reviewed it, but we should have a capital schedule. Yes, that says yes.
So here's what I would like, um, for you to give back to us, to me. I would like a list of all city-owned inventory, the fleet, where it was purchased from? And the exact price that was paid for the inventory.
Yes, sir.
Am I missing something? Because what I'm trying to understand, the more the que- the more the discussion goes on, the more specific the questions are, are getting to a different question. It, I, we, I don't understand that there is an issue concerning purchases made at a specific vendor or dealership or location, because if that's the question, then the, the other question becomes, um, what was the purpose of the expenditure?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I'd like to hear the expenditure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having a hard time, because they have to get tossed around and stuff, but the, the, just for the record, we have made, I'll go to the, I'll go to the For the record, we have one Chevrolet pickup truck. It is well past its prime, it is in my department. That truck is serviced at the Chevrolet dealership. Just so happens, I guess, one of y'all's former commissioners owned that truck. All my Fords are serviced at the Jenkins Ford dealership. You'll notice that on my fleet, um, from the past your budgets, it's greatly reduced because I have taken it out of the county's hands and, and have done it with local businesses. But to answer your question, there's no theirs there. It goes to the Chevrolet dealership because it's an old Chevy truck. And the Fords go to the Ford dealership, so.
Yes, that wasn't my, that wasn't my question, but the, the, the legal understood the question. Um, and more specifically, I wasn't referring to fleet in one department. I, I asked for a report regarding the entire fleet, yes?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion on item M one, credit card purchases report?
I have none.
All right. Okay, moving on, discussion item two, M two, unbudgeted spending report. From City Manager Burt.
At, at the last meeting, we were asked to run a report on all unbudgeted spending for over a thousand dollars. Um, it has been a challenge to run that report, complete that report, partly because of how our system is structured. Um, to go back and search previous years, we would have to open the books, we would have to reverse budget amendments. That would then flag the, the spending that had been overspent. And to do that would be uh, very disruptive to our business. When we, um, when the books are reopened, we can't accept payments for utilities. So that's one reason that we haven't been able to run the report, because we have to stop down, stop utility uh, transfers, uh, payments. Uh, so our system is just not set up to run it, to run the report, to get you that answer, we haven't found a way to do it yet. Um, that's where we are.
Un- understood, I just, and I know the time is far spent, we're talking about taxpayer dollars. I'd like to read this just for clarification. Until recently, city staff have not been maintaining best practices in financial reporting, leading to budget overruns. The changes were a choice by the previous administration, resulting in a lack of clearly documented spending practices or reporting. The current administration is rebuilding the reporting structure to address these issues. So I, understood, and are you saying moving forward, we, we will be able to? Or is this going water under the bridge?
I, I don't know how, I don't know if we can go back.
Okay.
Um, if we, if we're gonna go back, it'd probably have to be a special project, we'd have to bring people in over the weekends, it would be a, it would be a big project. And it'd be something that have to be strategically planned out um, to, to execute. And I don't know, the, the man hours to accomplish it uh, could be excessive, um, due to that, right? And just, I mean, if it's a will to the commission, we do it, we'll find a way, we'll find a way. However, it's, it's not as simple as clicking filter on the search.
Unfortunate for us, but fortunate for those who and understood.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, I think we're, we're under the, I'm under the understanding that we are now, we have been made aware that things were not always lining up, or things that were previously presented to be factual have found not to be that. Um, and in essence, it is unfortunate, uh, and it's one of those things that we may never understand or have the full answer to the why. Uh, but what we can do is put um, things in place to ensure that it doesn't happen again.
Correct, and the administration asserted that with an administrative rule, uh, is it twenty-four dash twenty? So it's right behind the staff report. So there is a, we have established an administrative rule on what to do with uh, over budget items. The staff is very clear on how to move forward at this point, how to report it, how to keep a record of it, and how to keep you informed as well.
Right, thank you very much. Any further discussion on item two?
I don't have any.
Okay, moving on to item three. Um, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-one, authorizing agreement with Metar and Associates. Uh, Attorney Powell.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Meade, Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Metar and Associates for engineering services related to the Florida Department of Transportation's street paving, repaving project, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir. City Manager Burt.
Um, Madam Mayor, we have a grant for a million dollars, our portion of it is a hundred thousand dollars. Um, this has not been included in the budget, um, but we don't think we're gonna reckon, realize these costs until next budget year. But we'd like to begin the process with Metar on the engineering and design phase of the F T O T project.
Okay, or you say you think we're not gonna incur?
I've been, I've been advised that we will not be incurring these costs this budget year.
Okay, awesome. Using two my ears, any further discussion, Commissioner Scale?
None.
Commissioner Watts? Commissioner Williams? All right, ready to motion, uh, to make a motion, um, for resolution twenty-four dash twenty-one?
Madam Mayor, I believe we adopted twenty-four twenty-one.
All right, we have a motion to adopt resolution twenty-four dash twenty-one, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Item M four, resolution twenty-four dash three-two.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Meade, Florida, approving change order number three to the contract with Benchmark Construction Company, Inc., for the S R F wastewater system improvements phase one project. Authorizing an increase in the contract price by thirty-one thousand, seven hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty cents. Acknowledging the revised substantial completion date of April twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, providing for incorporation recitals, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Entry, City Manager Burt.
Madam Mayor, we have a very detailed change order, um, this is connected to the project that's currently going on on Lanier. Uh, this is, uh, we're nearing the end of this project. Do you, tell me, think we'll have one more change order, or this is, this is gonna be it?
Um, it probably will be a change order, just based off of stuff they're digging out of ground, the field pipes that weren't there and
Okay, so we're, we're near the end of this project, um, and this is, um, to help us continue on with that project.
So foreseeing that there could possibly be another change order, will it, will it incur additional costs?
I, I'm sure it will, I mean, I, Director King has been, is more involved in this than I am, but when they're digging up streets, they're finding pipes that we didn't know were there.
Oh, gotcha.
I mean, it is, it is a, uh, it's a game of discovery. And so he's like, yeah, Director King will say, we found this pipe, we found this here, we don't know where that goes or where that comes from. And so it's just, I think, part of the, the beast of, of construction on a, you know, a system that's over a hundred years old.
Yeah, okay, awesome. All right, any further discussion on item, um, four?
I have one.
All right, Commissioner Watts? Commissioner Williams? Entertain a motion?
So do.
What's the motion, sir?
Would we approve, uh, item M dash oh-four? Through the change request number three, S R F wastewater system improvements phase one.
All right, there's a, there's a motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item M five, resolution two-four dash three-six.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Meade, Florida, approving the stormwater system improvement project at the intersection of Southeast Third and South Lanier. Authorizing expenditure of thirty-six thousand, forty-five dollars and eighty-two cents of the stormwater management budget, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir. City Manager Burt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, there's been some, uh, there's been storm, uh, I'm sorry. There's been standing water for several years around this area, um, there's, and since there's currently being work around this area, this is a nice piggyback to, 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 you know, complete that whole area, um, at once, rather than piece it together.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Scale?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Watts?
Question, uh, NG Underground, they're proposing to work.
This is NG Underground, they're already doing the project.
They've already made it, moved live here.
Correct.
And this is their restaurant.
Correct, yes, sir. And this has been reduced, this was thirty-nine thousand dollars on Friday, and, and, uh, we have since got it reduced down to thirty-six, so that is their price. And this is the recommendation of our public works director.
That's not a bad price.
No.
All right, awesome. Any further discussion, Commissioner Williams?
No.
All right, ready to entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor, make the motion, M twenty-four, thirty-six.
All right, there's a motion to adopt twenty-four, resolution twenty-four dash three-six, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right.
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm, we're coming up on the nine o'clock hours, so maybe we can entertain a motion, extend the meeting for at least ten, fifteen more minutes to provide for the rest of the agenda.
All right, is there a motion to extend the meeting another fifteen minutes?
Question? Uh, we've never done this before, I didn't know that was a necessary
Three hour limit.
I didn't know that. We've had it before and just never thought about it any time. Okay.
Can I get a motion to extend the meeting additional fifteen minutes?
So do.
We have a motion.
Second.
There's a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries to extend the meeting additional fifteen minutes. Reporter, the mayor, that would be me. Uh, I just want to say, um, I don't really have a, a, a major report or anything of that nature. Um, just appreciate the fact that we're being kept abreast of the moving target that is in City Hall. Um, uh, and sharing the information as it comes, uh, it's sometimes not easy to absorb, but I appreciate the transparency. I appreciate your willingness to work through, um, the many different facets of city government and putting us on a path, um, to better. I, I want to say thank you, hats off to you, entry, City Manager Burt, and as well as your staff, thank you all so much. Um, and those are all the comments I have at this time, I don't have anything else. Um, item O. Reporter, the City Manager.
I'm extremely proud of our staff. They have gone through a huge shift in the last few months. They have, they've gone through a lot of challenges over the last couple of years. Um, there's been some real positive changes with our staff. We have realigned people and put them in positions that they're better suited for, and we see their performance improve. Um, and I, I just want to say thank you to the staff for, uh, for coming around. Now, we're doing a lot of great things, we're moving the city forward, and I'm, I'm grateful to work with all of them.
All right. Um, any report from the City Attorney?
No matter, ma'am.
Nothing from the City Attorney, item Q. Um, any future agenda items from any of the commissioners? Commissioner Scale?
Just the, uh, making contact with the
Okay. All right, Commissioner Williams?
Um, I just, just again, kudos to, to you and your staff and all of the, the work and the hours that is required of you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Watts?
None.
Doesn't have any? All right, moving along to item R, for the good of the order. Um, any feel-good stories, any information in, like, the sharing with the commissioners?
Um, yes, uh, we know that our, uh, high school graduation is this Saturday, and anyone who's available, I know our kids, um, would appreciate it. Um, if we're able to attend and support them, this, this Saturday, I believe, at eight AM.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Your, uh, I shared this with the manager, and I think you mentioned that, I was driving in today, and I just had to stop to take pictures of the, the lights, and, I mean, the banners on the lights, I thought it was just excellent.
Thank you. Um, I think that's hats off to project graduation.
Yes.
The spearheading that, on behalf of the students, I think we've done that now for the past, maybe four or five years, Shannon? Five years, for the past five years, we've done that. Um, and I think it goes off pretty well, and even yet, even at the end, when the students do graduate, they have a parade and they come right down Broadway and they get to see their picture.
Did we start during the pandemic?
Yeah, it's been five years, yes.
They couldn't have their, celebrate something, we could do, celebrate.
Yes, yes, and also, um, our softball team, although they came up short today, um, they have made history in our, in our great city. Our girl softball team at high school, um, they were, what is it, district champs?
First.
District champs, the first ever, and so their names are in the history books. For our girl softball team, I'm telling you, it's the year of the woman. year of the woman. Um, we, we would probably, definitely, we're gonna do something to recognize and honor them, yes, we're definitely gonna have them come in and, and honor them at our next meeting, we'll, we'll work on that, yes, indeed. All right, um, any more feel-good stories, done? All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll make a motion, I don't make the motion, is there a motion to adjourn?
So do.
All right, y'all, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, four zero. Thank you all so much for your time, patience, and your understanding, good night.
It's on video for the whole.